Everyone like to call special meeting and council to work Monday, April twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty. Just want to start by saying thank you to council for changing your plans this morning. Approval of the agenda. Counselor.
We make an amendment to the agenda?
Addition or subtraction?
Addition.
Okay.
We add the discussion on the golf course?
Okay, secondar. Counselor Lehman, any discussion? All in favor? Posed, carried, thank you. Okay, so we'll make three point two. Approval of the amended agenda? Counselor Kirby.
Oh, that the Monday, April twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty special council meeting. Amended agenda be adopted as presented.
Secondar, Counselor Lehman, all in favor? Posed, carried? Business, three point one, Mayor's Economic Resiliency Task Force. A report from the Director of Economic Development and Tourism dated April twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty regarding an economic resiliency task force. I trust council had enough time to look over the the information there. Before we get to the recommendations, is there any changes council would like to make? Counselor Norbury.
So myself, the terms of reference, I felt they're great. I didn't have any issue there. I did have some suggestions for the.
Okay.
To start, I think with the resident survey, I think we should have a question regarding if they've applied for any supports during COVID nineteen. I think it is important that we. That the survey results have that data in them because. I'd be curious to see if what their responses to these are, if they are receiving any money or if they're not receiving any money from the federal government or British Columbia government. And like within that, there's a lot of, because there are a lot of initiatives that are available. Like there's the C E R B, there's the thousand dollar benefits for leaf workers, there's D C housing benefit as well. And I just want to make sure that people are aware that these supports are there and. If they haven't chosen to take them when they need it, I think that should that should be guiding our decisions.
Absolutely. Any other comment? Yeah, I agree with you, Counselor Norbury, I think that's a valid question. It's definitely important to know if they are receiving any help at the moment or not. Shall we make a motion to add that question? Counselor Norbury?
I'll make a motion that in the resident survey, we add a question regarding if they have applied for any supports available from provincial or federal government during the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Secondar, Counselor Majinsky, any other comments, questions? Counsel Majinsky.
Thank you, Mayor. So this will be just for the the residential survey, will there be something similar for the?
If that's what you're looking for, Counselor Norbury?
I'll, I was thinking that it should be on both, but I was thinking that we could go through these surveys one at a time.
Okay, sounds good. Called a question, all in favor? Posed, carried, thank you. Counselor Norbury, did you want to make another motion for the business one? Counselor Norbury?
Yes, so for the business survey, I'd like to make a motion that we add in a question regarding businesses have applied for any financial supports of British Columbia or federal government during the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Secondar, Counselor Kirby. Comments, questions, Counselor Kukaku?
So I guess I'm just curious so that we're back to council, where if it may, so we can have a question on there too, that yes, we've applied, but we were unsuccessful, we couldn't get it? Should that not be on there as well? Because I know people that have applied and were unable to qualify.
Yep, good point, Counselor Norbury.
Um, to answer your question, Counselor Kukaku, I think for both questions, that should be should be there because again, we, that information is important, whether they have applied and they haven't. So do we advocate for some residents who are falling through the cracks? I didn't really want to go into too much detail about the follow up portion, because a lot of these is like question and then all of the other ones, but you know, for for the. My sort of thoughts would be that they've either, they can either take that they've applied for the federal workers assistance program, so the seventy five percent towards their workers, whether they've accessed the government free interest loans. Whether they have applied for the rental assistance program as well that the government's offering to businesses. I think it's also a good way to sort of subtly remind people that there are these supports out there from our larger levels of governments and, you know, have you applied for all that you can? And again, if not.
These are.
Should be guided.
Yeah, counsel.
And and just to follow up on Counselor Norbury's statement there, I think we should have a list of all of the available options for them to click, whether it's a web link or whatever. Because I have written down over a dozen here that would apply, hope people could be a people for, so not just a handful of them, there's quite a few, so.
Yeah, and and we have advertised on our best company's site, a really detailed page on there, so we have been advertising all of the supports, so. Just another reminder on the survey, I agree. Any other comments or questions? Called a question, all in favor? Posed, carried, thank you. Any other changes, Counselor Howe?
Yeah, in the business survey, question twelve should be struck. I don't think question twelve accurately represents this council. Also feel that these surveys are often leading and they're often. Not in the best interest of what we need in Tumblr Ridge, I've seen surveys before previously that lead us off in a different direction. When we were doing the survey on residential lots, for example, we never had any intention of doing any residential lots in Tumblr Ridge that weren't five acres or larger. The reason being is that residential lots, five acres or larger, would not require us to put in services, therefore they would be cheap. But we were, there were counselors that were insistent that we put this survey out, the survey goes out and it comes back with, yeah, we would prefer a lot that is this size, but they don't know the costs. Right? They don't know the inside track that we know, they they know what's in front in front of them is a survey, yeah, but I like a lot that's one point five acres, sure. But not knowing that that one point five acre lot will cost you ten times the amount that the five acre lot will. So sometimes these surveys can be misleading and I'm not in favor of the surveys at all. I'm pretty sure the surveys are going to go through, so that's why I'm trying to make some changes to it. But this one twelve, you know, again, given the district's tightening financial situation. When do, when do we have a tightening financial situation? When did that happen? We've got almost twenty six million dollars in savings and we have a tightening financial situation, don't agree with it and think it should be struck.
Okay, make that as a motion.
Sure, put a motion on the floor that twelve is struck from.
Secondar, Counselor Majinsky, comments, questions? Counselor Kukaku?
Can we get a reply back on why this was added in this form? I believe you're a part of that discussion in regards to setting up the survey, I think, I could be wrong, but maybe we can get an understanding why was, what did that mean?
Yeah, if if Ms. Torval would mind Mr. Powell explaining this question a little bit?
Sure.
Please.
Mr. Powell?
Certainly. You know, we, you know, we we keep talking about, or council keep preferring to, you know, we don't know what's around the corner as far as the mines are concerned, you know, a lot of the businesses. And, you know, there is concern, you know, if the if the if the mines don't reopen again, you know, what would be the situation? So that's why I did put in, you know, concerns about the tightening budgetary needs, I wouldn't have you to remove it should count that, should that be council's wish.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Powell, because this was one of the questions that I. Of most of them, I wasn't too sure of the purpose behind number twelve because. And I agree that the wording is, there's a couple of points, and then I think maybe we can change the wording a couple of questions. Regarding the question, it's kind of like we're dangling these supports in front of them that we may or may not be able to deliver on. But then the other side of the of that is maybe we do need to hear from businesses on if they feel that these would actually be useful to us. A lot of these, a lot of these suggestions, question. Questions within the question, it could guide what we're going to be doing moving forward, so maybe we should be hearing from businesses, I'm not too sure.
Any other comments, Counselor Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor, I think if we were going to vote to strike number twelve from the business survey, I also think then we should take out number eight from the resident survey, which is another. And it's along the same same guidelines and we have boxes where residents and businesses can comment after. And that's a good place where they can come up with, you know, that's where they can put their personal input there.
Okay. We'll deal with number eight on a separate motion there, please. I do agree with you, Counselor Howe, I think number twelve is misleading. It also is providing possible strategies that I agree with Counselor Norbury, he's kind of dangling the the candy in front of them, I guess. Yeah, I'm in in agreement of taking that out. Just a reminder too to to counsel that this is draft, these are ideas that our our department and myself have gone over. Really appreciative and and thanking council to to give their input. I I I'm not a huge fan of surveys either, but in in my opinion, we need to get some information from our residents and businesses and and this is the way to do it, I believe, so. I'm hoping for high participation. Any other comments on the motion? Called a question, all in favor? Posed, carried, thank you. Counselor Kirby?
I would like to move to. Take out number eight from the residence survey.
Secondar, Counselor Lehman, comments, questions? Called a question, all in favor? Posed, carried, thank you. Any other changes, Counselor Howe?
Fifteen on the business survey? Just need to shoot up a checkbox for other.
Yeah.
Other, just a spot where they can write it in.
Yeah, in case we haven't captured it in this, yeah. Yeah, this is the fairly general list, but.
She has other services up. Second one from the bottom.
Okay, so maybe under other services have a line where they can write it in. Okay, secondar. Counselor Kirby, comments, questions? Called a question, all in favor? Posed, carried, thank you. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, on the resident survey, one B. The third tick box down. I've I have had to lay off staff members at my business, which has devastated me, I feel that would be, that's not, I don't think that's a resident question, I think that's more of a business question. So I'll make a motion that remove, I have had to lay off staff members at the business, which has devastated me from the residence.
Good catch, secondar. Counselor Lehman, comments, questions? All in favor? Posed, carried, thank you. Good catch there. Any other changes, questions? Counselor Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor, I'm just looking through the resident survey, does it have, does it capture anywhere, it's always, we, but it doesn't say, I live alone, I am a senior. I I don't know if that's something we need to look at, but there's not, there's nothing kind of singling out.
Haven't captured seniors?
I live alone, I have needs, you know, that maybe we're missing. I'm not exactly sure where we could.
Go ahead, Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm just wondering if that's like family and personal circumstance concerned, it's other, please specify.
Okay, yeah, that's, that could, yeah.
Yeah, we certainly want to try and capture each, every demographic here, so if you if you do see a gap, please let us know. Any other comments, questions? Counselor Norbury?
This is just a minor thing, but I think on the resident survey, questions four and five, I don't don't agree with the wording, are you worried about your ability? I think it should be a little more specific and you should be saying, do you foresee? Does that sort of encapsulate the question a little bit more precisely in that, yeah, we're we're all worried, but realistically, do you foresee any actual issues?
Good point. So that would be for number five as well? Okay, so motion to add. Subtract worried out of question four and five and input foresee issues? Secondar. Counselor Kirby, comments, questions? All in favor? Posed, carried, thank you. Counselor Howe?
What's the matrix that we're using to regulate who takes these surveys?
It's still, we haven't struck the committee yet, so we could get Mr. explain his thoughts.
Sorry, can you just repeat the question? Like, how do we regulate who takes the survey? Like, by an email, like, can can I, as a resident from Shepman, just send my email in and comment on it? Or do you have to be a taxpayer in the community, do you need to be a business taxpayer? What's what's the metric that you're going to use to capture that that person is from Tumblr Ridge and is a resident that pays taxes here or a business owner that pays taxes?
Well, the the resident survey, we were planning on putting it out by mail to all the mailboxes in Tumblr Ridge, so I think that should potentially capture that one. We could add a a question perhaps into the into the business survey to say, are you a resident of Tumblr Ridge? Or, you know, some question to capture that, would that? Is over in your mind?
Counselor Howe?
Yeah, and so like I did, again, I just to, you know, we're trying to figure this out or how we're going through this. Like, to me, I think it's critically important that responses you get from this are people that pay taxes in Tumblr Ridge, that that that's critical. There has to be some way of them identifying who they are, so that you don't get fifty.
Out of towners.
Or or even some person in town that decides, you know, hey, if I can influence the survey with fifty inputs, then maybe they'll, you know, come up and sweep my grass off for me or something, or whatever they want out of it, right? So to me, I think it's important that there's some, either you have a tax roll number attached to this or an email or something. I don't think that this should be an anonymous survey, I don't see the benefit in an anonymous survey. I think that there needs to be some way to to look at, you know, qualifies as a resident in Tumblr Ridge as well, right? I I don't know how that's done, but that's, I guess maybe that's for the community to decide, but.
Yeah.
To me, to be comfortable with these surveys being sent out and not getting erroneous information out of it.
Yeah, I I I agree with your concern there, Counselor Howe. Ms. Torval, I think Mr. Powell wanted to respond there, if that's possible.
Yeah, I I wanted to clarify, was that for the resident or for the? For the business?
It's for both.
For both.
I mean, we did, you know, in order to get a good, hopefully an honest response from people, we wanted to leave it anonymous, so that they would be upfront. People, people we discovered are embarrassed, if that's the right term, you know, by some of the circumstances, perhaps, if they are negative about their jobs. So we wanted to make sure that we get it anonymous for that reason.
But there, I think there is a way that we can ensure that the the surveys go out to residents and taxpayers. Like, I think we can control that aspect of it. I mean, anonymous, we can debate that afterwards, there are some prying questions here for sure, so. I think if somebody had to put their name on this, possibly some of the answers may not get answered, or some of the questions may not get answered. So I I think we can debate that afterwards, I I do hear your concern about the metrics and that's something that the committee is going to have to ensure that we really think about the proper way to deliver this. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you. Now, I'm I'm a little concerned about the the phrase taxpayer only. Are you referring only like household tax, Counselor Howe, because I feel that, you know, just because you don't own a home in Tumblr Ridge, doesn't mean that you should be precluded from from the survey. I want to make sure that, for myself as resident, I think the idea behind a post office box is is one of the best ways to make sure that you're Tumblr Ridge resident. Because I know, like, one of one of the first parts about getting memberships around town is that you prove that your 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 post office box, right? And that's one of the usual, the best ways to prove that you're a resident, because you have a post office box, you know, because there are a lot of people that rent. I do recognize that, yeah, there are a lot of people that just come and go in town, we definitely, I wouldn't say definitely, but I think their opinions may skew our results a little bit. Yeah, I don't think we should be excluding people who aren't homeowners.
Yeah. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, I was just going to say, if you have a box number, you're obviously a resident, so I think that's how you control, you send it to all the boxes and then you get back. I mean, they don't have to put their name on it, it's still anonymous, but you have control of who gets that survey and how many surveys go up.
Counselor Majinsky?
And so, once these surveys are filled out, they're going to have to drop them off in person somewhere, is that the, how this is going to work?
We haven't really worked out the details yet, to be honest. Counselor Howe?
I'm not necessarily trying to, maybe that was worded, not the way that I meant it to come out, I'm not trying to just go after the residents that pay taxes, although to me, we are spending their tax dollars, it should be, you know, at some point, but. Again, maybe these surveys can have something in there that says that, you know, if if you want to self describe yourself as as a someone who pays taxes or.
Homeowner even.
Homeowner or 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 business owner within the community or whatnot, to me, that that holds a little more weight for me. That's, you know, the the intention of the motion I put forward, whatever it was a few meetings ago, was to get the tax dollars back in people's pockets that pay the taxes in the community, regardless of where they live, they're the ones that pay the taxes. And I think generally, I'd say ninety percent of them or better are residents of Tumblr Ridge, and to me, I thought that was a better way to put the money in their genes. You decide where you think this money needs to be spent, rather than us deciding where it needs to be spent, so, you know, you know, maybe that could be included in it, I don't know how people feel about that. But that that you could say something, you know, that you are a homeowner or you have tax roll number or something. My concern is is like a, like an email, you know, just email, you know, you go on on type type the questions in and and it's too anonymous to me, that it could be, it could be baited as well.
Yeah, we thought that too with our initial couple of meetings there, email isn't as controlled as mail would be. Yeah, that, we we definitely need to work out the details, Counselor Howe?
Yeah, and and one other thing I think would be important as well is that we we need to have some type of number. Of what this is out of, you know what I mean, like if if we consider, you know.
The scale of the.
Well, I can write a survey in, is that on behalf of my household, and then my wife can put one in, can my kids put one in? You know, like, where where did, where's the metric on the number of people? If everybody in the community can put in, we have a population census from whatever it is, two thousand and sixteen of whatever, twenty two hundred people in Tumblr Ridge or whatever, is that the matrix we base it on? So if we get fifty responses out of twenty two hundred, we haven't done very well with this survey. So that's, you know, something else, what is this out of, then the same as the businesses, like, we have a business role that we can pull out and we can say, here's the heavy industrial, light industrial. You know, based on this role, we have six hundred places that we assess our taxes to, is that what the the number is based of, where we make our decision? You know, for instance, like the, when we did a survey on the museum, we knew exactly how many people wanted to slide based on who came out to vote, right? So we had six hundred and seventy people come out and vote, and that's how we knew where the, of those who voted, that was their opportunity to say something about the museum. We had made metrics to base it on. If we don't know where we're at and we get a hundred and twenty replies to this, some counselors may think, oh, well, that was an excellent reply, to me, that's not an excellent reply.
Yeah, you have to.
Five percent of it.
Yeah, yeah, you have to take the scale of those.
That would be interesting to me, that staff has that number before the survey comes back to us as well.
Absolutely.
Know, what do we consider the businesses that are out there and the residents?
Absolutely, and it'll be. Accumulation of how many we put in the mail and how many we send to businesses, that'll be the the scale of it.
Okay.
Counselor Majinsky?
Thank you, Mayor, so for the businesses, we have a business registry and those are the ones that have obviously paid their business tax for the year. So those would be the only ones that would be sent out too, and so we'd probably have a pretty accurate number, how many we're going to send out, so we have a base and then we'll see how many we get back and make a differentiation there.
Yeah, we definitely have to keep in context of of the scale, like, I forget which survey we got back recently, actually, probably last year, I think it was the old age one. But the the scale of the of the survey was very small, like it was under five percent. So we definitely have to keep in context of that and and how many responses we get, but I think this has really affected everybody, not just, you know, renters or not homeowners. I I think honestly, it has affected everybody as far as social distancing, as far as not being able to see your families, not being able to travel. It's it's taking its toll, for sure, Counselor Norbury?
Thank you. I think a good, a good way to ensure that we have the right people answering, we just make sure that the residents' impact surveys for those. And when it comes down to a a scoring system, I don't really see that this being a out of, you know, a hundred, hundred survey. You know, it's more of a, well, based on the answers to question one, well, maybe this is a strategy we can have, it's more of a information gathering. And when it comes to surveys, the sad fact is, we're we're, if we hit above ten percent responses, probably it's, that'll be a success.
I agree.
Surveys, a lot of people just don't want to answer, I'm hoping that they will take this seriously and will have a much higher rate, I'd like to see ninety to a hundred, hundred percent response, because we need to know what's the best way that we can help people with this time.
Majinsky?
Thank you, Mayor, just to put this into context, this is going to affect people, so they probably will fill it out and it's on their own time, so they can do it. Last year in two thousand and nineteen, we had an emergency preparedness workshop for small businesses in our community. And this wasn't just for forest fires or flooding and that, it was actually lasted in there pandemics. And it went through the whole game plan of how a business could endure something like this for one month, three months, a year without, you know, and going through the proper channels to get the the funding they need or cover their insurance or whatever. Two businesses showed up. And because those businesses, everybody, everybody in in the community got an opportunity to go to this, but two, but they didn't think it was probably necessary because what are the chances? And so those two businesses out of however many we have here, guarantee you, we're going to have a lot of people fill out forms in in with, because it's now affecting them. But I think this, we should, if we have the ability to have this again, we should, or an online form of this economic. Or, sorry, emergency preparedness workshop, I think it should be, it's very valuable information, I gained a lot out of it, and it makes you really think about your business and how it should be operated and how you can help out your staff, how you can help out your own personal business, your finances, everything. It was, it was amazing, it was too bad there's only two businesses that showed up. It was, it was amazing, it was too bad there's only two businesses that showed up, so.
Counselor, how?
And that's, that's the point of getting that, like, and and it's not a scoring system of a hundred, by the way, that didn't mean anything like that, I meant, how many people are gonna respond to it? That to me is super important, if two people respond to this in the business survey, we don't make decisions on that, we take the survey and throw it in the garbage. It doesn't mean anything to me if if two people respond to it, doesn't mean anything to me if five percent of people respond to it. It needs to have weight, it needs to be, and if we get responses ninety to a hundred percent like Counselor Norbury is hoping for, if we get that, I I'm listening up, so.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I'm basing my decisions going forward for the next year on that survey, you've got a great subset of people that are doing that, but. That's my concern, two people show up and you make a decision based on that, that I wanna stay away from.
Oh, I complete, completely agree with you, um. Yeah, we definitely have to keep that in context, but I think it's really gonna be our job to promote it, um, to remind people about it. Um, to explain to people and residents that um, this is the information we're lacking, we need this information to make informed decisions. Um, yeah, what um, do we wanna discuss anonymous, or do you? Does counsel feel that that could be decided by the committee, Counselor Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think it should be anonymous, I think that if we're gonna do this survey, that it should be sent out to to um, our residents in an envelope. And it re- and returned with your signature on it, I think this is why we want the information, this is why this this task force is being formed. Because of possibly increasing services or or providing some kind of financial re- relief over and above what the province. And what the federal government says have already done, so I think to, for us to be even going in down that road to be thinking about providing something. Then we need the the actual responses from our residents, I I you're not, we're not asking fine for financial disclosures. But we need to know what businesses are being affected and the businesses and the residents, the true accounts. That's my, that's my opinion on this.
Counselor Majinsky?
I think it varies from business to business, cuz I'm a small business owner, um, don't wanna put myself into any conflict here, but. I don't think my situation would be as. The same as say, Mr. Shadens at uh, Kanuma, right, that would have, his impact would be far more heavier than mine. Or any other small uh, one or two sole proprietor business, uh, compared to some of these, uh, you know, some of the other businesses that I'm sitting here now, you know, like they're. Have a lot of overhead, a lot of stuff, um, I don't know if that'll be a weight system in there too, because some of these businesses have a lot more. To offer and to to lose here too, right?
It's a good point.
To a sole proprietor as myself, so.
It's a good point, Counselor Kalka?
Yeah, I'm actually, we're same as Ms. Kirby, or Counsel Kirby is, same thing, it's quite, quite anonymous, like, I mean, if you have any issues, I mean, it's not, like, it's gonna be public knowledge. I'm gonna read out people's names in here, whether maybe it's their address, I think it stops the beating of the of the surveys. I I can't fill out my neighbors', maybe he doesn't wanna fill it out, or if I throw mine in the garbage can, I can pick up two now and actually have two surveys.
Right.
Right, like, and and there's no, I'm not saying it happens, but I mean, it's be realistic, if I can, if I, Counselor, I'll mention it, if I can do, if I can help make decisions or direction. I fill out a survey and it's five or six in the in the garbage can, I mean, I know last time we did a survey by mail, there was lots in the garbage cans. We couldn't just find the post office, that's that, and actually, I believe the town was picking them up for recycle back then, so. You know, we're paying the money to put them out, and then they're ending up in recycle, and I believe that's why Canada Post removed the recycle or the bins there for that. It's cuz people were paying to have stuff put in mailboxes and then going in and seeing them all in the garbage can. I'd be more than, Counselor, just to come.
Okay, Counselor, how, then Maj- Majinsky?
There there's something in here about the amount of employees, isn't there, in the in the business survey that you have? So, you know, that that type of thing there, like, with uh, Counselor Majinsky and Counselor Kirby were discussing there. You know, that to me is the ones that hold weight, right, so exactly, like, I I'm not, if two responses come in, one is from Kanu McCall, one is from Versatile Vinyl. I I'm certainly more interested in the one from Kanu McCall that has the huge employment.
Scale.
Scale, it's not a one for one thing, it's not to say, well, we got one for one here, this this group is saying, they're good or they're not good or what, and and so I think maybe that's the. Part in the survey that we 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 take weight in, but then again, we gotta dig pretty heavily into that, like, if we've got eighty or ninety or hundred responses. How do we, how do we pick that one out that was the biggest employer or of the biggest employers, right?
Yeah, and I think with that question of how many employees, after we get the responses, we can uh, we can uh, categorize the businesses. You know, over a hundred employees, fifty to a hundred or under fifty, right, um, yeah, I think that's a good point. Um, Counselor, how?
Yeah, and then and then like, is like, we we've talked about this, this committee doesn't have, it's not about spending money, it's about gathering information. There's ten thousand dollars uh, towards a committee for whatever staff time or paperwork or whatever uh, put forward. But me, me as a resident filling this out, I I think to myself, well, what what are you gonna do to help me if you're not spending money? You're, this is gonna help you form policy, that's that, is that the intention behind the survey, and should that be brought forward and? Explain to people, right, like, this is not about us doling out the money, that's that's what I've heard from people, is that is this about doling out the money, and I said, no, it's not about spending money, it's about. Information gathering, like you said last, last meeting, right, so.
With with that.
Tell them that is what I'm getting.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, with with that information, though, I think the the committee needs to come up with some creative ideas or creative strategies. I think the whole goal of this is to try and, first of all, find out the impact in our community and see if there's an area where we can help. Uh, if it's financial, it might be financial, if it's social, it might be social, um, I wouldn't say that we're closing the purses on this. But um, you know, the first step is gathering the information to see where we're at, um, and then come up with some ideas. Uh, I've got Counselor Majinsky, then Norbury?
One comment, um, like, say you do have a business and they wanna be somewhat uh, unanimous, or um. Sorry, lost the the word there, yeah, yeah, um. Could you use their PST number instead, and then if we do get in, like, the uh, the accounts or whatever, then they can. To credo, you know, use credibility on it, just type in their PST number to see if they're, if they wanna be somewhat.
Anonymous.
Um, but that was, that was one of my old questions, I have a new question if I can.
Please.
Um, if this information we gather, once it's all together, are we gonna pass on to Minister Mongol? Uh, cuz they asked to re- they reached out to us, the district, for uh, what we are wanting and to give them feedback, is that gonna happen? And and did they have a timeline on when they wanna see something from us, is it a two weeks from now, one month from now, um? What's what's, cuz like, a lot of these questions is like sixty day impact, uh, that's gonna be starting when? Like, these timelines start, when these questionnaires go out, when's the end, like, when can you have these in by? And if the minister wants something going on, like, when when do they even wanna see results from our committee?
Yeah, um, I'm not sure about the Minister Mongol, I know our act dev uh, has a phone call with the minister, I believe, tomorrow, tomorrow? So that's definitely a question that can be asked, um, timelines, that was another question, um, you know. Uh, I I think that could be left for the committee to decide, but uh, curious on counsel's idea on timelines. I've got Counselor Norbury, then how, please?
Um, so back to the issue of anonymous versus non anonymous. My thoughts sort of surrounding what would garner us the most um, most information, will will people be? By signing your name, will that prevent people from sending in their surveys, I think it will. I think if we're, if we're concerned about people falsifying information, it's not too hard to write your neighbor's name and sign it. We're, we're, unfortunately, I think if we're concerned about the negatives, we'll, it'll be an overwhelming evidence. Sorry, I'm getting off topic a little bit, but I think if somebody wants to cheat, they'll cheat. Um, but from my opinion, when it comes to what would get us the most accurate information, I think anonymous is the way to go, because uh, no. Never underestimate someone who doesn't, they don't have to worry about repercussions or anything negative, I know that it's going to the, it'll be going to the committee, it won't be released. But for myself, I I feel more comfortable with it.
Okay, Counselor, how?
Yeah, and I, again, I I I want uh, accurate information, I don't want, you know, anonymous information, I want the information of people that were willing to put their name forward and step up and say. This is where we're at, I I don't want that, no, I'm just gonna throw the survey in and hope for the best, so I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that staff create some information inputs. To ensure the survey uh, doesn't remain anonymous.
Second, Counselor Majinsky, comments, questions? Okay, I think that's a general theme, I think uh, that the committee can work with that, for sure, Counselor Majinsky?
Yeah, and I I did fill out the the test run of the the business one, and I felt it was important to put my business in there or know who I was, um, it. Felt like I could actually put in what I felt relevant, um, cuz you could even fudge it even if you don't put your business, so that you could skew it. And I think this keeps you a bit more honest, you know, and personally, I think you should have that information available for decision making.
Counselor, how?
And and we'll leave it up to staff for the information inputs, that's why I put it out there, if they wanna use a. A PST or GST number or tax rule call or their name or email or response, whatever it is, we'll let staff figure it out. Maybe they'll put two or three metrics in there that somebody does feel comfortable with, if they don't wanna put the rule number on there, maybe they'll put their PST number or their GST number, whatever, right, so.
I I do agree, I think this is an important informa- uh, topic and an important time and. And um, you know, if if people feel strongly about this enough, I think they will put their name. It is the debate of of whether or not you're going to get the responses, but um. I think this is important enough that people wanna be heard, definitely. Counselor Kalka?
I just wanna make it known, I don't believe the 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 survey is as a whole come back to task force, maybe I'm wrong, but I believe the survey goes back to staff. And they'll, they'll do the accumulation and pass that on to the task force, I don't think the task force is gonna be opening up envelopes and looking at who's who's filled them out, who's not. Believe that's gonna be staff, and I read something here from Mr. Powell, how it's in a kept confidential. Take it for your valiant, but your response will be treated as confidential. That's obviously going to staff, and that's staff's job.
Okay, Counselor, how?
And and again, if they can't verify that that business or resident is here, that one doesn't stay within the survey.
Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor? Post, carry, thank you. Uh, what else, homeowner or renter? That was a issue, should we add that question to the residents? Counselor, how?
Uh, talk, again, I think that's a little bit of a input, like, it's, if staff is able to put something like that in there. This is a a way to identify somebody, so that's that's what we're looking for, I think we pass that motion, and I think that this. Again, it doesn't have to be your tax rule number, it just needs to identify that you are a resident of Tumbler Ridge, so.
Okay. Um, timelines, um. I, in my opinion, I I felt this timeline was uh, very important, that's why I called a special meeting today. If we were to wait till till next week, pushes us another week to two weeks behind in getting this information back, so. You know, possibly this could have waited till next week, but I I felt that we need, really needed to hash this out in order to get this, so, Counselor Kalka?
So, I just wanna get confirmation that, you know, there's been a lot of changes made through the surveys, some things added, some things taken out.
That is gonna come back, right? There's council meeting, hopefully, so that we can approve it, right now, it's still a draft.
Well.
I'd like to see the changes to make sure they were captured.
Not that I don't trust staff, but, you know, some some things get missed, I think it should be right that it comes back.
So that we can confirm that it is what we wanted to see in the survey before it's sent out.
Okay.
That's just my thoughts, like, this is a draft, doing changes, I understand now staff will come back for that, I just wanna confirm that through you.
Well, we can, or we can uh, we can uh, prove it today, it's it's really up to counsel. Counselor Norbury?
I'm a two parter, so when I agree with Counselor Kalka, I think this should go back to staff, we should see it again, like, anytime there's a revision on drafts, we should be able to see it up. Um, just to make sure that uh, still encapsulates what we're looking for, um, second. I just wanna throw out a suggestion for the additions to the surveys, is do we wanna have a section on there where. We wanna find out their input if they need help applying for assistance programs. I I know that um, not everyone is capable, or either they don't have the technology, they don't have the um. Ability to use technology, is that something that we want to, or could we offer them in terms of like staff?
Interesting point, Counselor Kalka?
Yeah, so I've been looking up, so there's also, you don't have to just do everything online, you can, there's actually numbers they can call to. So, you know, I'm not saying not to do it, but there's actually numbers, if they don't have a computer or have access to that or understand it, there's actually numbers they can actually call. And speak one-on-one with someone from that that's second, that's taken care of, so, I think it kinda completes that one.
Counselor, how?
And are we capable of doing that, what Counselor Norbury is asking, like, how, like, is our, is our staff able to do that? Like, I don't, I call, I call down, I don't know how to do it, does Ms. Torville have somebody on staff that can then direct me? To my particular situation of how I can apply for funds? I don't know if we are capable to do that.
Yeah, I I don't think we've offered that service yet, uh, Ms. Torville, no. Counselor Norbury?
Yeah, and um, you know, to Counselor Kalka, um, even though that they have phone numbers, I've I've had to deal with individuals. That those, almost like phone mazes, so to speak, where you have to press button one and two, and like, they still get confused halfway through, um. I don't think anybody really has experience doing it, uh, I know that when it comes to government forums online, it can be very daunting. People just sometimes enjoy having some help, if that's something that. You feel that it's not our role or responsibility, that's fair enough, but I do think that some people fall into cracks because they don't have the uh, the ability or. Or they're just too nervous about it, so.
And, yeah, leave it at that. Any other comments, questions, any other changes counsel would like to see? Counselor Norbury?
Um, just a small thing on um, the residents' impact survey one B again. Second from the bottom. I don't, I would, I don't like the wording of the second half of that phrase, I feel secure in my employment. I'm pretty lucky considering the circumstances, I feel that we could probably keep that as I feel secure in my employment. I don't, the second part there.
Motion to move, Counselor Norbury?
I'll make a motion for move that I am, I'm pretty lucky considering the circumstances on uh, question one B of residents' impact survey.
Second, Counselor, how? Any other comments? All in favor? Post, carry, thank you, good, good call there. Any other comments? Counselor Kalka?
Yeah, just if we remove that one there, same with one A, I E F, I O R L, we're pretty lucky considering the circumstances, I mean, same, same.
Motion to strike that from one A? Second, Counselor Norbury? Any other comments? All in favor? Oppose, carry, thank you. Counselor Norbury?
Um, let's talk about uh, question three of the residents' survey. How many weeks could you financially sustain your household if your workplace closed and you received no additional pay? I'm concerned that this isn't a um, this, the answer to this may not be useful. In that we are asking for speculation if they did not receive any um, funds, because people who are working would be asked to answer this question. And. My concern is that um. Yeah, it just doesn't give me any useful.
I see, I see your concern there, yeah. Any other comments? Wanna make a motion? Go ahead.
I I was hoping to get a little more uh, discussion going, whether I'm, whether I'm uh, on the point or not, or if I'm just, you know, nitpicking, you know, so.
Yeah. Counselor Kalka?
Yeah, I I mean, I have no issue that, I think that's, I mean, that's, you know, it's, whether you have your job still, this is a sixty day turnaround, so maybe people have already lost their employment. How how long were they able to hold their their household, I mean, maybe we already have people that are unable to hold their household after six weeks? So, I think it's a viable question. I mean, this, we're looking for financial, task force is coming back with ideas, and all of a sudden, we get a a bunch of answers or replies to this. I think that's the idea, the task force has come back to council with some recommendations or ideas, and maybe that's us going back to government saying, we have some huge issues in Tumbler Ridge, we were unaware of. I don't know, I I, like, how long can you hold your own house, how long can you hold your own business open with any financial support, or if you've had to close in Tumbler Ridge? Due to the uh, orders put in by by the health officer. Some businesses are having to be closed, can they sustain their business, it's the same question, really. Like, you know, these businesses are actually gonna be able to reopen, you know, I watched a report in Vancouver, I mean, I know it's not Tumbler Ridge, but there's already businesses saying they will not be able to reopen. They have left for a fact, and they're gonna have to live with that. there's already businesses saying they will not be able to reopen. They have left their path and they're going to have to live with that. So I think that gives us some information that, you know, is there something else we can do as a council? Or now is it time for the government to step in and help us out? Uh, maybe I'm wrong.
Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. At the bottom it says rather not say. You have the option of not saying anything if you don't want to. So, I don't know, I I think it's a valid question. I mean, it gives you an indication of, you know, what state the the household is in.
Yeah. Counselor Hal.
I don't think it's a valid question at all. You could have already have lost their job and the survey goes out for how long and by the time they fill it out, it could be already be lost. To me, it's, you know, we're asking about their financial state of their household as well. To me, it's like, it bears
I can s-
not up to us, right?
Yeah. I can see this question being more relevant to March twentieth instead of uh, right now, six weeks into it. Counselor Norbury? Sorry, counsel.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this this question isn't a pandemic question, question. This could, this question could be asked at any time in somebody's life. That's why I think it's, I agree. I don't think we should have it on there.
Yeah, and and I guess we got to look at the answers too. Like if we, what are we going to do with the answers?
Yeah.
Counselor Norbury?
And one of one of the part, or one of the parts of the question is if you received no additional pay. Well, there is options out there for additional pay. I I, cause I I I feel that uh, the question just doesn't, the answers that we get back, I don't think is is relevant enough to this discussion.
Motion.
I'll make a motion that uh, we remove question three from the residence survey.
Seconder, Counselor Hal. Any more comments? Counselor Calca?
So, it, I I I mean, I won't support it. That's fine. Then what about question four and question five? I mean, we're asking about whether they can buy food or afford their medication, but we're not worried about if they can stabilize their their household with the utilities. Food, pet food. And that's not food for themselves. I mean, there's there's a ton of questions in there in regard to that. And then question right below is asking if they can afford food for the in the next sixty days. They're worried about not being able to afford it. It's the same question above.
Yeah, to some degree. Counselor Hal.
Yeah, and I I don't necessarily agree with Counselor Calca on that one. It talks about your ability to purchase food. You're worried about your ability, not necessarily financially, but your access to. Perhaps people are concerned that their medication won't be there because shutting down or whatever, right? So I mean, it's a little different, but they could be removed as well, but it doesn't affect the vote on three.
Yeah, I think the answers to four and five are are useful, more useful than they would be to three myself. Counselor Norbury?
And um, so I I still support the motion that I made, but if if we're concerned about people's ability to buy um, utilities and toiletries, maybe that's a question we should we should add in, you know, similar to four and five.
Any more comments? Called a question on the motion, all in favor? Oppose? Carry. Thank you. What's next? Concerns? Counselor Majewski.
A lot of these questions will be dependent on what uh, additional funding they do get from the province. So if you do get a delay on your BC Hydro or PNG for three months, you could allocate that money towards your food, you know, so a lot of these questions is all time dependent and at this time, some people may be able to sustain. So if we put out this survey three, four months from now, questions could be completely different.
Absolutely. Yeah.
This is another time.
And and that's really why I I believe time is of the essence is we need to capture the the situation we're in right now. Counselor Norbury?
You know, just just to add to um, something Counselor Majewski said, I'd like to get that information out there that BC Hydro is offering, they're not offering deferrals, which some people are. They're actually offering grants for people who um, have received emergency assistance or whatever. So, you know, if anyone's watching, you know, they're offering that service.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be repaid, yeah. Okay. Any other changes, council? Okay, so we'll uh, we'll bring that or we'll give that back to staff to um, make the changes. Would council prefer it coming back at the council meeting on Monday or by email? Counselor Hal.
I'd ask them back at the meeting.
Okay, very good. So, I guess the only recommendation we could deal with is the last one. But um, we could definitely defer that to Monday if council would like. It's council's thoughts. Counselor Calca.
Just wondering, I'm going to deal with terms of reference. We've been dealing with several, two different ones, the state of the motor on G. Still, we've surpassed the years uh, task force terms of reference.
Is there any changes on the, thank you. Is there any changes on the terms we can deal with that one? Counselor Hal?
I just wondered, should there be some type of a vote? Should there not be a vote within council to say, yeah, I think it's, we should continue with this task force? Maybe we're just wasting time turning our wheels anyways. For for me, I I don't think we should have formed a task force. That's why I say it. I don't think that we should have the surveys going out either, but obviously there's going to be input. I want to have my input into them. So maybe, would that be?
Yeah, we could definitely.
Which which we have that discussion?
Yeah. I'm curious to know how you wanted to get the information from our residents and businesses without a survey.
I think I don't want to do task force at all.
Yeah, I understand, but how is council going to get this information that we're requesting or needing for for informed decision without a survey or a committee? Just curious. Counselor Hal.
Yeah, so so we have an opportunity to talk to the residents on the street. You have an opportunity to have your feel for where you are. You've been elected by a a subset of the community that thought your responses are what represents them. Uh, they, when you come into a meeting and you don't do the right thing, they let you know it. And you either get voted out next term or or whatever. So to me, there's decisions that we make in here all the time that I don't have the response from all the residents of Tumbler Ridge. And when I make a bad decision in here, I hear it from people. Uh, when I make a good one, I hardly ever hear anything from anybody. But uh, when you make a bad one, people let you know it. And to me, I I just don't think that we need to to form a task force on this and and that's just my personal opinion. Uh, and I don't think surveys are, um, I I've never thought surveys that we've sent out that I've seen come back good. Tried it for five years. I've never seen one come back that I thought, yeah, I really put. The only one was the museum one. That's the only one I was able to put weight in because people had the opportunity to vote on that one. But uh, that was like a referendum or whatever, all that, right? So, um, to me, I just, I don't really even see the need of the task force. I think it was a a waste of time in my mind, so, but see what the will council is.
Yeah. Well, to respond to that, I'll I'll get to you, Counselor Norbury. Um, you know, we were talking about how we're going to control the scale of it, how we're going to ensure that these are the residents of the of our community. And in- instead of the task force, our our task is to um, as counselors, go and talk to the residents. Not having any idea how many you're going to talk to, getting, trying to get, come up with a general theme of of what you're hearing. And then coming back to council to make decisions. I I don't see the control of the scale of that surveys si- system. Uh, there is no control there. We're going on uh, Counselor Norbury saying, I've spoken to many residents and and Counselor Kirby saying, well, I've spoken to many residents as well. Well, how many is that? You know, if if we want to control the 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 parameters of the information that we're going to get, we have to have some kind of a structure, I think. That's my opinion and and that's the reason I I think that we need to continue with this task force. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you. I'm I'm in support of the task force and I think I think you did a good job in describing the importance of getting back data. Like this is what it's about, is data. It's not anecdotal because maybe we all speak to different people, right? Like maybe the people that I talk to, I'll talk to three. And uh, you know, maybe Counselor Howard will talk to five and, you know, Counsel Lehman six. You know, maybe uh, um, but then we're only hearing from people that feel comfortable talking with us, you know? Not everyone's comfortable talking with other members of of our council. This is a way that they can just send it in. And I feel that we'll get a and then we can actually have the data to support it. I think data is the the key on this one. You know, sometimes when it comes to task force and surveys, I doubt their efficiency as well, but we need some sort of information to to go on, right? Whether whether we're right or wrong in our opinions, I feel that through the surveys, we're allowed to be um, we need to adapt to what we're hearing from residents, not just from the people that feel comfortable talking to us. Some people, they'll they'll feel, they'll feel comfortable, you know, coming up, giving a, giving a heck about a bad decision. Some people aren't com- comfortable about doing that. Maybe the survey will give them that opportunity to do that.
Counselor Hal.
I I use something like the golf course as an example.
Sorry.
You know, uh, you want to go ahead first?
No.
Okay. I I uh, use the golf course as an example. Like uh, I didn't need to get a survey from the residents of Tumbler Ridge to realize that our golf course needs to get taken care of ASAP and has fallen through the cracks at this point. I brought it forward in a meeting. I asked seven other people in here, do you think this is important enough to add to a special meeting? Six of us raised our hands. It was important enough to bring to a special meeting. So it's here. That that's how I do it and and to me, this is the same thing. You wait to see at what point someone says, Jesus, you know, all of us are having a hard time with paying our taxes this year. Okay, then we come back and we make a decision or all of us, whatever, as a collective group can't do something or the majority of people are having issues with such and such and such and such. I I don't see how this survey comes back and says, yeah, you know, we've got thirty percent of the businesses seem like they're having financial hardship and 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 twenty seven percent of the of the people feel they're having financial hardship. Great information. What are you going to do with it? We're not planning on spending any money out of this. Uh, and so how how can we?
How how do you know that? That hasn't even come forward.
I I thought you said it wasn't about spending money. I thought task force wasn't about spending money. It was about gathering information together.
The first step is gathering information. Second step is using that information to come up with creative ideas to try and help i- if there is a need to help.
Okay.
Whether that be financial, whether it be social, whatever it might be.
Okay.
I'm not closing the door on no financial on this. If the committee comes up with a great idea to stimulate some sort of the economy, that recommendation will come back to council.
Okay.
So I'd like to put a motion on the floor. Um, sorry, sorry. Getting ahead of myself here. Counselor Kirby, then Counselor Calca.
Thank you, Mayor. You asked about if we were in favor of the task force. The reason I'm in favor of this task force is because I wanted to slow down council's decision making on ta- ta- tax cuts and financial relief. Because I don't, I was voting against that uh, from day one. Because I don't think it was the right time and I'm still not sure if we have the right information or if we should even be doing it. So that's why I'm in favor of the tax or the 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 um, this uh, committee right now is just to kind of slow us down and gather information.
Counselor Calca.
Yeah, so regardless of task force, just to get the information, we don't need a task force to get to get the information from residents or businesses. We can direct staff to set up a survey, come back with in a report with the findings of the survey. So you don't need a task force for that. I I get the idea of task force getting together and having, you know, every season, different, different views and different pin- opinions. You know, when you look at it, there's, you know, uh, mayor, two counselors, act devs on there, tumblers, chamber of commerce, love Tumbler Ridge, mayor, uh, major industry representative, a possibly three local resident. So you're going to get some input from outsiders. So I get that understanding, but you know, I hear that, well, we want the information, but you you don't have to have a task force to do that, to get the information. I mean, I get the idea of task force getting together and coming up with suggestions and and ideas and bringing some recommendations back before council to to debate it and vote on. To hear that Counselor Kirby is in favor of a task force just to slow things down, how does that speed things up in your eyes, having a task force? She wants to have a task force and slow it all. And I'm fine with that. Like, don't get me wrong, Counselor Kirby, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you in regards to just making motions and voting on money and stuff like that. I totally agree with you on that concept. But if a task force is just going to be be involved to slow everything down, how does that justify getting the survey, getting the information, making recommendations come before council? If we're looking for a task force just to slow that process down?
Yeah, I I'm, to respond, I'll I'll let Counselor Kirby as well. I think uh, to slow it down, I think really what we were missing uh, previous couple meetings was the information. How many people are affected? How is this affecting everybody? And I think uh, making reference to slowing it down is really just information gathering by Counselor Kirby, but did I capture that?
Yeah.
Counselor Norbury?
Yeah, thank you. And and by slowing down doesn't mean going slow. Rather than going a hundred, we're going to, we're going to slow it down to ninety, you know, like it's just getting a little more information to make the correct decisions that that are targeted.
Counselor Majewski.
And when I asked the question earlier about Minister Mongol, when they reached out to us to see what he, they wanted to find out information as well, and I think that's probably going to work hand in hand quite well with the task force, but it'd be interesting to see what they do with this information, how they're going to help our community, because that's why they reached out to us. So um, whatever information we provide to them, I'd like to see what they would like to help us do. Then maybe that alleviates some pressure that we have to come back and help our residents out or small businesses. So um, that's, and that's all I wanted to ask was the, what we're going to do with the minister and and how we're going to go forward, so.
Yeah. Good point. Counselor Calca.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same comment. Don't need a task force to gain information. Surveys can be directed out by the staff. I mean, this council sits here and makes decisions in a whole. To me, when you put a mayor and and two counselors on a committee, they're coming forward as a recommendation from this task force to me with three votes, you know, before the debate. So that scares me.
Well, and that's, yeah.
You're looking for one buddy after this task force brings recommendations. You're looking for one buddy. Um, yeah, debates happen and debates can change people's minds, but that's that's the concern I have. Um, right now, uh, task force or the committees I sit on, it's usually the chair and one other. Uh, I think I'm more in favor of that. It's two people, not uh, not uh, three people from the council. Again, it's not quorum.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess that's my concern. And I have no issues with the task force. I just don't think to me that we need task force to get information. We just still direct staff to do surveys.
Yeah, I see your point. And to respond, I think uh, the reason for the task force is really to uh, provide an opportunity for collaboration for um, those members of of that. Uh, I hear your concern to counselors and myself. Um, uh, yeah. We can uh, we can make changes to this as well. So, uh, if you'd like to make a motion, file me. Counselor Norbury?
So I'm I'm fine with the the structure of of the committee because you're making an assumption that all three members of council around this committee are going to be in agreements. And I think I think it's a good, good idea to have multiple members of council on this committee because it could give different perspectives, right? Cause we're all, we're all members of this council because we we're elected. But I think we all represent different parts of our community and we definitely want to have that other um, aspect of the committee, not just have like mayor and one other person because we're going to be missing out on that um, information. Um, and yeah, they, we're not in quorum at that moment in time. So if we're, if we're um, if we're concerned about any conversations happening there, yeah, I mean, I I just don't see, I don't see.
Okay. Counselor Calca.
I'll play recognition on the, along here with the council, prism ears, economic resilience, task force terms of refer- references presented.
You didn't want to make a change first? Oh. Okay, seconder, Counselor Norbury? I think we should do a different motion prior, but yeah, okay. We'll go with this one.
We we quit, instead of doing these things without having motions on the floor. Better not to put the motion on the floor. I know we did it with the surveys, changing the survey before the survey was even hit.
Yeah.
Now it's going to be hit, we can make changes and it it can be done.
Yeah, I agree. I I'm, what I was thinking was the the uh, emotion of actually creating this um, or supporting this task force might have been appropriate prior, but um, yeah. Counselor Norbury?
And I think by um, either approving or or denying the uh, task force terms of reference, I think is a a signal whether we want to continue with this or not.
Okay. Good point. Counselor Hal?
Uh, yeah, I was just going to say, you know, the same thing. I think we should vote on to see if, but the motions have been put on the floor and seconded, so we need to move forward with that one and we may have to go back and cancel the whole task force altogether, but it doesn't matter. Motion's on the floor. Uh, so my question would be, uh, what have we set up for, like, do we have members uh, selected yet? Do we have anybody who's put their name forward or any of the counselors or, there's one, there's you on it for sure. There's the mayor.
Yeah, I um, I put the email out to all of council and received two responses. So, not a lot of responses there, but um, yeah, I haven't, I haven't chosen anything yet. Counselor Hal?
As as somebody who's not in favor of task force, I'd like to put my name forward as one of the counselors on the task force, because you'll definitely get an objective view from somebody who doesn't uh, is concerned it would spend money on the task force. And if we get something that comes And if we get something that comes through that I think uh, in my mind is is worthy of spending money on, I think it's an easier sell to come back to council with. You have somebody who's gonna be very objective towards it, so I I'd like to put my name forward to be on that.
Okay. Curious, um, did you receive the email?
Yeah.
Okay. Any reason for not responding?
Yeah, I'd like to do it in council.
Okay. Counselor Kukalka.
Yeah, so yeah, I was gonna say that, I'm not willing to sit on the committee, but the same thing, I I don't uh, ask those kind of emails, I think that's okay. We're just getting, you know, Counselor Norbury is the one that are always about debating, and you start telling adding people to the thing, people can start debating why an individual maybe shouldn't be on there, so if I put my name forward, it could possibly do compete why I shouldn't get to put my name forward, whether I already have too many committees or whatever. So, get my question to you to to your ownership is, are we making a motion for yourself and the two councillors in this on this committee? Like previously, when these these forces have been 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 initiated, we actually make the motion and approve who sits up.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the plan?
Uh, it's really up to council. Uh, we've got a motion on the floor to ac- accept the um, terms of reference here. So if we wanna make any amendments to it at the moment, I think we should, and then uh, we can definitely deal with the positions. Counselor Kukalka?
Yeah, so I I I know, I mean, I was in discussion with you, so I mean, it's not, it needs to be said, and I guess actually, I'll just terms of reference and stuff. I'll just leave it for now, wait till the other one comes up. It's in the terms of reference, but I'll wait for it.
Okay.
Sorry.
Any amendments to the terms? Okay, called a question, all in favor? Opposed? What do I have here? I think we're carried there, yeah, okay. Counselor Kukalka?
So do we wanna put it, do you want, like, how do you want it? Do you want a motion put forward for you to sit on there, or you're automatic? Or does it have to be a motion out for you and then the council?
I wouldn't say I'm automatic, no. Counselor Kukalka?
I make a motion, um, that Mayor Bertrand chairs the task force, Counselor Kirby on the task force, and Counselor How?
Seconder, Counselor Lehman, discussion? Counselor Majinsky?
I would like to hear Counselor Kirby's uh, response, because I think she might have wanted to uh, deny that. I I wanna know if she wants to continue on with that, or if she had another idea of somebody else to go on in place of her.
Okay, Counselor Kirby?
Um, I'm fine with sitting on the um, task force. There was a um, possibility that that someone from uh, South Paul might sit on that, and uh, and that's why I said I would take myself off. But I'm willing to sit on this, so then another business would be obviously asked.
Yep, okay, thank you. Counselor How?
And I think absolutely the mayor needs to be on this. It's his task force, it's the mayor's economic resilience and task force, I think, you know, for sure he has to be in it. Um, and and again, that's that's the o- other side of the spectrum, that's somebody who, uh, you know, has the vision for this, that person needs to be there to see that vision through. It it falls apart if you don't have uh, that person on there, so I think absolutely the the mayor has has the have their opportunity in there.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Called a question, all in favor? Opposed? Carried, thank you. Counselor Kukalka?
Council authorized task force budget, you're paying twenty about ten thousand dollars, which would come from hundreds of funds.
Seconder, Counselor Norbury, comments? Counselor Kukalka?
So so I did, you know, I did see this, I did get some understanding. I get it's for some staff time. You know, if you guys decide to do the mail out survey or wherever happens there, so that's, you know, this isn't to go and spend on other stuff, it's obviously to run the task force, so just wanna make that known.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Majinsky?
Why why ten thousand dollars? Why couldn't it have been four thousand or three thousand dollars? I don't understand, for mailouts and to do a survey would cost upwards of ten thousand dollars.
Uh, I think at at this point, it's a general number and um, we're not, when we were discussing it prior, we're not sure how long this is going to last. So uh, the ten thousand is definitely on the high end, um, assuming that this could possibly last for a year. And uh, after each fiscal year, I believe this can, this comes back to be renewed. So um, you know, we can evaluate it at that time as well. Counselor How?
And then, and I also think about the money, because we're in unprecedented times, what are we gonna do? Where are we gonna put eleven people? We're gonna eleven people at a minimum, that's what, or seven to eleven, sorry. And then you have probably some staff members recording information or something. You have to put all those people somewhere in some room. Rec center shut down, not allowed to use it. It's not enough room in this place to do that. So where do, you know, there there may be some, you know, you gotta rent something or go somewhere, right, so.
Yeah, and we have to look at some virtual options as well. Um, you know, that, I think that is gonna be the way of the future a little bit um, for the next six to eight months at least, so uh, we definitely need to investigate some virtual options there. Okay, called a question, all in favor? Opposed? Carried, thank you. Uh, three point two, discussion on the golf course? Motion to discuss golf course, seconder, Counselor How, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Counselor How?
Yeah, so I I've I've had a ton of people come up to be uh, asking me what our plan is for the golf course. Uh, they're concerned we're starting uh, a little bit late. And I just wanna try to move this thing forward a little quicker. I don't know what our plan is with employment for hiring a greenskeeper or grounds crew. Um, I'm I'm assuming staff has some indication of what they wanna do with that moving forward. I would think a greenskeeper who knows what they're doing down there with a proven track record would make sense at this time. Uh, I don't feel that we need to go out to the public uh, to hire somebody. I think that uh, the guy that we had previously would be a good fit, uh, and and I'd like to see that just get going, like, get get moving on that. Um, the way I understand it, there have been people down on the golf course already. Uh, and I've also heard that there were power carts on the golf course already, so uh, that that's a bit of a concern to me. Power carts going through the water out there uh, right now can really wreck greens, uh, or so wreck the the turf, everything, so. Uh, we know it's coming, and we need to make a decision if we're gonna open the golf course or not. Uh, I am in full support of opening the golf course. There's absolutely no reason why we couldn't do social distancing down there. Uh, so uh, just rather, like, let's get going on it, let's make the decision on it, so.
Okay, Ms. Torville, would you mind uh, giving us an update?
Thank you, Mayor, council. I just wanna inform you that the uh, the posting for the head greenskeeper is up today. And by me posting is because the head greens, the head greenskeeper is a union position. It has to be posted, even though we know the the uh, track record of the greenskeeper that we've been hiring in the past years. So that is being posted today and um, hopefully by next, because it has to be up for seven days, internal posting. And if there aren't any applicants, then we go outside, but I'm I'm confident that we will receive this internal applicant. And uh, we can be ready to go for next week. I checked into when we started at the golf course last year, and in comparison from this year to from last year, we're a week behind from last year. So we are looking into it and we are working out. And further to that, there will be a report coming on the next uh, May fourth meeting with regards to their options in opening up the golf course. Whether, because there was a while there, we didn't, a period, we didn't know what was gonna happen, whether it would open or not. And so I thought, okay, we'll we'll do a report, bring it to council. I do not want to be the one responsible saying that we're not going to open the golf course this year. I felt it wasn't like the council decision. So uh, so yeah, so I appreciate your patience uh, with us to that end.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Norbury, did you have something? Sorry. Counselor How?
Yeah, and that was, a lot of my concern is is the delay on getting somebody hired. I'm glad to hear that it that it is on, uh, it is moving forward within seven days, we'll be ready for that. And I have huge concerns about that. I didn't know that one of them was gonna be two week or three week hold back, and we had three applicants, if you had to take the time to go through them, and here we are, you know, uh, May long weekend before we have somebody hired, so I'm glad to hear that we are moving forward on.
Counselor Kukalka?
Yeah, I was gonna make a couple comments, and disrespect to Counselor How or Mr. World, that's not our position anyways, we can ask staff for an update. We don't, to me, we don't sit here and advocate for certain people to be hired. I mean, I I don't wanna get into that, no disrespect, but the thing is, when we start doing that, I think we get into a point where now we're trying to stop the district, and that is definitely Mr. Torville's job. And I think we need to let her do it. I get that we're behind a bit. I believe we're behind a bit too because of COVID nineteen and staff side of it. Um, not trying to use that as an excuse, but I I I mean, obviously, I own a grocery store, let me tell you, I've I've worked with all this. No question, Counsel How. I think Ms. Torville, just to answer that they've put it out with a hiring, yes, we're behind on it, but hopefully that'll catch up the speed, because of the condition, the course, and stuff like that, you don't wanna lose it, and I get, I mean, golfers being on councils.
Counselor Norbury?
Um.
Something?
Yeah, you know, to 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 agree with Counselor Kukalka, um, staffing, the best way for us to maintain neutrality is that we we post these jobs and make them available. Because the last thing I think we wanna do is start showing favoritism to individual people based on, you know, perceived notions that we're we're picking this person out because we have a favoritism, we're gonna keep it fair and honest. Um, you know, I'm I'm not a golfer, I'm hoping to get out there this year. Only only if Counselor Lehman could uh, show me those a little bit, but. But I don't think you need to be a golfer to recognize the importance of uh, of opening the golf courses. People need some sort of physical outlet out there right now. I think we should be moving forward in opening the golf course. You know, my only concerns are with ma- making sure that people are maintaining safe distancing on the course, right? We can't let this sporting activity being an excuse for people to be um, you know, exposing everyone else to higher risk, right? So I would hope that um, you know, you have some sort of system in place to monitor that, or, I mean, it's it's hard to monitor, but maybe there's some sort of enforcement we can do there, just to make sure everyone's safe. Because the last thing I'd uh, like to hear is that um, you know, someone got sick down at the golf course and there was a group of four that were there.
Yeah, I hear your concerns. Counselor Majinsky?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, and yeah, part of the enforcement and and having somebody there at the course is a good thing to have to monitor, because of if the course isn't open, there are power carts out there, or people walking their dogs and all over, there's groups of people. That is uh, district property and it should be, you know, monitored, because a lot of other areas in town are closed, like playgrounds and and stuff like that, so that's gonna be a contentious topic when there's, you know, a lot of other places where kids can't go out and play, but the adults can. So that's one big concern there and and how we're gonna monitor that, all of that, so.
Mm-hmm. Counselor How?
Yeah, and again, I I mean, I don't mean to advocate for any particular person, I just think that, you know, we we have people in the community available, ready to go to work. Um, and and whether it be in a short term solution, just to get going on it, and if there are concerns down there, if if they've been addressed by staff, uh, you know, I've heard some concerns, if we don't get on the greens quick enough, we're gonna lose them, and I I don't know all the particulars to it. But knowing we have somebody in the community who can do something with it, I I just thought, you know, hey, if we can get them out there, get them moving on it, that would be fantastic. Post the position. If somebody comes in, that's a golf course designer from Hawaii, and they happen to be living in Tumblr Ridge right now, and they're a better candidate for it, by all means, hire them up and and whoever it is, but you know, to me, it's it it's to get the idea uh, in staff's mind and thinking about it. We've got these people that were, you know, uh, the way I understand it, uh, are, from our last meeting, their work schedule is done in less than three weeks. You know, that they are out of work in three weeks, and that was two weeks ago, so it should be by the end of this week, they're out of work. So, you know, this gives us an opportunity, at least get somebody down there, get thinking about it, put some gates up. There should be no way that we're letting power carts go all over that place. That terrifies me. People would be going over the greens and who knows what they're doing down there? There's absolutely, and it's our responsibility to, you know, uh, make sure that uh, we're protecting the health and safety of people that are down there as well.
Okay, any other, any more discussion? Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things I asked to Mr. Wall about three weeks to a month ago about that posting, and he said it was going to be out, so I was under the impression that it was going to be out. Uh, apparently that's not the case. The other thing is, people are blaming the delay on council. It's not council's job to decide when to go and start working down there, so I don't know why they're not aware of that. But uh, that's that's the district job, that's not ours. We don't tell it is what to do. We only have one employee, and that's what people keep forgetting, and I don't know why that still is. And we need to, I don't know, do a better job or s- somehow informing people that there's only a few things that we can do. We can suggest, but we don't run the district.
Counselor How?
And and I can, I can agree, and I understand where you're coming from, Counselor Lehman, it's just, we are in unprecedented times right now. We've lost our C A O, we have an interim C A O, we're trying to hire a C A O, and we're dealing with COVID nineteen at the same time. I think it is on council to bring in, or bring uh, areas of concern forward that, you know, yeah, maybe we're crossing into that line where we we're we're getting involved too much in staff, but it's ensuring that the residents are 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 being taken care of as well. And it's just a friendly reminder to staff to say, hey, are we on this, or is this happening, uh, and and where are we at with it, right? Perhaps the email trail that comes out over the weekend, where we ask to add the golf course to the agenda, is what kickstarts us into getting the H R moving to hire somebody for the golf course, like, I I should have been done a while back, but that is one of those things that can fall through the cracks, where you have somebody like Mr. Wall that's leaving and and bringing it, uh, trying to remember everything for Ms. Torville, and that we miss one thing. There are gonna be other things that we miss along the way. And I think it's just prudent of us not to go back and say, yeah, it's not our responsibility, we didn't, we didn't have to do it. We know about it, we should be bringing it forward.
Hmm, to staff, yeah.
Absolutely.
Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, and that's not what I meant. I just meant that we can talk to uh, our C A O and and mention it. I have no problem doing that. I, in fact, I did, I've talked to Eileen already. It's just that they're they're under the impression that that it's our decision. It isn't. We can bring it up and let them know that there are concerns, and I have no no issues doing that, believe me. I wanna be out there, does anybody else, but, so that's not not the problem, that's not the issue there.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, uh, question and answer period. Counselor Kukalka?
The meeting is closed to public, according to community charter, section ninety-one C, as follows, C, leave relations or other employee relations?
Seconder, Counselor Majinsky, all in favor? Most carried. I need to ten.
Question and answer thing, we should have, just chatting about that for a second, though, rather.